Mr. Jarvis. Uh, Mr. Senners.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
I was ready to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I was out of order. Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. Laura.
Here.
Mrs. McDonald.
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Burton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. If you're entering the room right now, we have an ample amount of seating in the first few rows that are specifically reserved for those who are honoring our Teachers of the Year, so please do come forward and take those seats if you'd like. Mrs. McDonald, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
Absolutely. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Tonight is a regular meeting of the Board of Education, or as some like to refer to it, a voting meeting of the Board of Education. The items coming before the Board this evening have been before us, that are, the items that are being voted on anyway, have been before us probably twice, sometimes more than that, for discussion, questions and answers and so forth. So you may or may not see the amount of questioning and discussion on an item before it's voted on that you might expect. Please know that that is because it's been voted, or it's been discussed at at least two previous meetings in most cases. If you're looking for more discussion, I do encourage you to either attend or view from home the study sessions of the Board of Education or the committee as a whole. Those are frankly some of my favorite meetings because we do get to discuss in quite a bit of detail the items that are coming before the Board of Education. We do have a very special evening this evening. Our Teacher of the Year presentation is going to be among our first items on our agenda, and we're very thrilled to have a packed audience for that this evening. If you would like to follow along with an agenda, they are outside the door of this room. If you are viewing from home and you'd like to follow along with an agenda, you can find them on our website, which is lavoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the School Board tab, you'll see a drop down to the agenda, and you can click on that and follow along if you'd like. The next item on our agenda is Item 3, Communications, and Mrs. Jenkins will be starting us off this evening.
Good evening, President Burton, members of the Board, Mrs. Oakquist. Jump right into my notes here. As you can see from the-
Mrs. Jenkins, I'm sorry. I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion first.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Laura. The Item 3A is our Teachers of the Year, and we do need a motion to start this item off. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Laura.
I would be happy to offer a motion. Move that the Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions for the 2015- 2016 Teacher of the Year. Lauren Schnell, Roosevelt Elementary; Michael Race, Frost Middle School; Julie Cosgrove, Franklin High School.
Support.
Is that Mrs. McDonald? Okay. Sometimes there are several at once. Mrs. Jenkins, you can go ahead and introduce the rest of the topic now.
Thank you, President Burton. As you can see from tonight's very large crowd on hand, this is a very special evening for Lavonia Public Schools when we honor our Teachers of the Year. Before we present this year's honorees, I'd like to offer a bit of background on the Teacher of the Year program, which is now in its 32nd year in LPS. So here's how it works. To be selected as a Teacher of the Year in a district with approximately 1,000 educators and more than 14,000 students is quite an honor. The selection process is not taken lightly. I'm not even sure the honorees know just how much goes into the selection process. I'm not even sure they even realize it. We do have a 13-member committee, Teacher of the Year Committee, which is made up of teachers, administrators, and parents. At this time, I'd like to ask any of our committee members who may be with us this evening in the audience to raise your hand and be recognized. Yep. Hi. Thank you for coming. As you can imagine, the selection process is very difficult. We review the nomination forms and data sheets that each of the candidates, the nominees, fill out with narratives from each of the nominees. There are far more excellent teachers in our district than the numbers that we're able to honor each year, but the running list of those honorees grows with each passing year. At this time, I'd like to ask any former Teachers of the Year who may be in the audience to raise your hand, and so we can honor you. I knew I saw several being here. This year, the committee has selected three Teachers of the Year: one at the elementary level, one at the middle school level, and one at the high school level. And a drum roll, please. The Teachers of the Year are, as was read in the motion already, it's somewhat anticlimactic at this point, but Lauren Schnell is our elementary Teacher of the Year, Michael Race is our middle school Teacher of the Year, and Julie Cosgrove is our high school Teacher of the Year. So let's give them a quick round of applause. And I'm gonna have, I'm gonna ask the three of them to come and join me at the podium as they go through some very special items here. With this item comes some amount of celebrity factor, and it's complete with their own agent, who is yours truly. I keep them in the spotlight at all times. With this honor, they're recognized on the district's website, in the district's dialogue newsletter, in local media, as you can see, here's our photographer from the Lavonia Observer, thanks for being here, Bill, by the Lavonia Chamber of Commerce at its annual leadership and award ceremony, by the Lavonia PTSA during its annual Founder's Day event, and they're being recognized tonight by some of our local elected officials. We have tributes on hand and resolutions from Senator Patrick, State Senator Patrick Kolbeck's office, State Senator Laura Cox's office, Wayne County Commissioner Terry Morecki's office, Wayne County Commissioner Diane Webb's office, and Wayne County Commissioner Richard LeBlanc's office. So at this time, I would like to invite those dignitaries who are with us in the audience to join us here, feel cozy on up at the podium here, and we'll allow you to present your proclamations. So we have, we can do, we can do the state resolution first, and I have those right here. And tonight, we have Mrs. Penny Kreider on hand to join us from Senator Kolbeck's office, and State Representative Laura Cox.
Thank you. She had just promoted me, now she's demoted me back to Representative.
Oh, did I say?
I won't take it personally.
Sorry.
You've got big dreams for me. That's good. That's good.
Positive.
Yeah, so I just wanna, you're gonna discuss all the highlights about each candidate, so I won't steal anybody's thunder, but I do wanna take a moment to just tell you how honored I am to actually be invited before this board and to take a moment to honor you, one of the times that you have a roadshow, and I'm happy to be at most of the events if I can make it. So congratulations, I wanna, this is for Lauren. I say Needham Fisherner, so I see him all the time on Sundays. This is for Julie. And of course, Michael, the music teacher, right? I played the violin since fifth grade, so I love music teachers. You guys are kind, patient, and it's just amazing. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Now, we have Wayne County Commissioners Terry Morecki and Diane Webb.
Thank you for inviting us here tonight. I also played the violin, by the way. But thank you, it's an honor to be here. And Commissioner Webb, and Commissioner LeBlanc is also on these resolutions. We're honored to be part of this. I grew up from kindergarten to 12th grade in Lavonia Public Schools, my four kids did, and now my grandkids are, so I appreciate all of you, all the teachers in this district and all the administration, the school board, I was also on the school board, all the school board members, but to be a Teacher of the Year is such a special thing, and I know you guys put your heart and your life into this job, so we're happy to honor you. I know Commissioner Webb wants to say a couple things, but we're very happy to honor you tonight, and we're proud of you, and thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you. Also, I just wanna say thank you so much. I have the utmost respect for what you do. I went to school to be a teacher. I ended up taking a turn when the telephone company that I worked for would no longer pay for my degree, and they told me, "We don't sponsor teachers anymore because we don't, we don't hire teachers," so I went into a business degree. After I left the phone company, I went back and taught, got a whole new respect for educators, and you know what? The boardroom is a walk in the park compared to the classroom. So I just decided that I don't have the patience to do it, and God bless you all. I have a 15-year-old at home that sometime is free to a good home, but, so I really respect everything that you do and thank you every day for your patience and your hard work with our kids. God bless ya.
Okay, and if I could have you stay with me up here, we're not quite finished. Now it's my turn to shower you with some very special gifts. I'd also like to mention, I didn't bring it down from the lobby, but these three fine educators' names are now engraved on a very special plaque upstairs in the lobby here at Central Office. We also have, every year, we present this 20-pound apple to our Teachers of the Year, and each is engraved. This one is, it happens to be Lauren's, but I'll put it back in the box for you, so it's nice. I have one of these for each of you. They're now in the ranks, joining the ranks of those who are wearing the special, I call them the alumni pin. They've got a Teacher of the Year, a golden apple with a blue stone, and they're quite lovely, and they're wearing those this evening. Let's see. Oh, best part, I have some gift bags, as always. And this is special because these are filled with gift certificates from local businesses, and every year, I go out to ask businesses for donations for our Teachers of the Year, and they jump at the chance. The business owners are so happy to contribute. So at this time, I'd like to list those generous businesses, if I may. Each, each of our Teachers of the Year will receive one free night's stay at one of the following Lavonia hotels: Detroit Marriott Lavonia, Hyatt Place, or Embassy Suites. Okay? And also in the bag here, we have gift cards to Los Palapas Restaurant on Plymouth Road, Champ's Americana on Hagerty, Buddy's Pizza, and Sibella's Pizza at Five in Newburgh. For a little bit of the entertainment value, there are gift certificates, or power cards they're called, to Dave and Buster's. And also, Commissioner Terry Morecki's office has generously donated two tickets to see a Detroit Tigers game for the 2016 season, so there's a certificate in here with directions to, all you have to do is call Terry's office and pick your game and bring a guest and have a great time. Okay? You're welcome. Okay. Oh, I almost forgot, there are more gifts outside in the lobby, on the counter, from Costco and Bush's Market. Costco has donated a very nice warm fuzzy blanket, which I guess are pretty famous, and Bush's Market donated a bag full of goodies. So, yeah, those are out on the, on the counter for you. And also, I'd like to mention for our reception, the coffee this evening was donated by the Big B Coffee on Seven Farmington. So, okay, so I'll have you three sit down, and then I'll call you up one by one as we go through the program, okay? Thank you. Okay, so now I get to tell you a little bit about each of these very special teachers. So sit back and enjoy these wonderful stories about, about our three honorees this evening. We'll start with Lauren Schnell. He is our elementary Teacher of the Year. Lauren teaches 4th grade at Roosevelt Elementary. And I'd like to ask trustee Mark Johnson to join me at the podium, and Mr., trustee Johnson has a board resolution that he'd like to read, and we'll bring Mr. Schnell back up to the podium. Good thing I seated you so close, right?
First of all, although we're honoring these three individuals tonight, we want to thank, as the Board, all of the teachers in our district, because we think we have the best. So who we're honoring tonight are the best of the best, and we really, really appreciate everything you do. And Mike, I, I'm sorry, I didn't play an instrument.
It's not what you like.
The good thing is, the good thing is, my daughter did, graduated from Stevenson, graduated from home, she's now a music teacher. So. Lauren, I'd like to read the resolution that the Board has put together tonight in your honor. Whereas the trustees of the Board of Education are desirous of recognizing and promoting excellence in education in this school district, and whereas Lauren Schnell, teacher at Roosevelt Elementary and a 21-year employee of Lavonia Public Schools, has distinguished himself by being named Elementary Teacher of the Year for 2015-2016 by a district-wide committee of teachers, parents, and administrators. Whereas, in achieving that recognition, it is evident that he is an exceptional educator, going far beyond the expected range of his duties to meet the needs of students, colleagues, parents, and others. And whereas Lauren teaches 4th grade at Roosevelt and maintains a classroom climate that is full of possibilities and new beginnings, he fosters this climate by building self-esteem in his students. And whereas Lauren Schnell is a talented teacher who is dedicated to his student's success and also to the profession of teaching, he is mentor, assistant adjunct professor, literacy team leader, presenter, and literacy chair at Roosevelt Elementary. Now therefore, be it resolved that the trustees of the Board of Education do hereby commend and congratulate Lauren Schnell for being named Elementary Teacher of the Year for 2015-2016, and for the dedication and loyal service he has rendered to Lavonia Public Schools, the students, and the community. Lauren, congratulations.
Oh. Oh, no way! I'm gonna bring that around on camera. Okay, so, yeah, you have to stay while I talk about you. Okay, so opening Lauren Schnell's letter about his teaching philosophy, I was immediately hooked. He begins the letter with a quote from a former student, which reads, "I'm the bad kid. Watch out for me." It was Lauren's first day of teaching in Lavonia Public Schools more than two decades ago, but he remembers it like it was yesterday. His reaction to the student's view of himself was immediate and deliberate. He responded to this 5th grader, saying that he was not a bad kid at all because he would not let him be. From that first day on the job here in LPS, Lauren knew that his teaching philosophy would be centered around making kids feel confident and competent in school, leaving the doubt and low self-esteem at the door. In his letter, Lauren states, "It is our responsibility as teachers to find something to admire and appreciate about each student in our classrooms, and to foster a sense that anything is possible." Mr. Schnell, that is a tongue twister after a while. I'm just gonna say Lauren. Okay. Lauren's accompli, Lauren accomplishes this by creating learning situations in his classroom that truly inspire kids to want to know more. "Nothing is more rewarding," said Lauren, "nothing is more rewarding than seeing the light in the faces and eyes of students when they make that connection or master a new concept. When working with a battery, a copper wire, and a small light bulb, it seems as if my students are all personally discovering electricity for the first time." He believes that hands-on hangs on. I like that quote. Lauren Schnell is described by his nominator, who is colleague Christine Finkel, as being reflective, approachable, and generous. She said, "Lauren masterfully develops a, a community of learners in his classroom." She notes that Lauren gives of his time and talents to his colleagues by serving as a district literacy leader, a role that he has had for more than 10 years. As a literacy leader, he actively supports literacy initiatives at the school and district level. He is also a mentor. He feels a responsibility to inspire and guide the next generation of teachers. He does this, he does this through mentoring student teachers, hosting learning labs for grade-level colleagues, and by encouraging grad students at Madonna University, where it was mentioned earlier, he is an adjunct assistant professor, to try innovative approaches to teaching literacy. He said, "Working with Madonna students gives me the opportunity to reflect on and debate the latest trends in literacy and learning. Being open to new learning and, new learning and new ideas helps me to never be complacent. There is always something new to try and make your own." Lauren's list of school and district involvement is quite extensive. He is respected by his peers and revered by his students and their parents. Former Roosevelt Principal Kay DePero, in her reference letter in his nomination packet, said, "His contributions to both our school and Lavonia Public Schools as a district are endless." Colleague Catherine Barnes also had many positive things to say about Lauren's teaching skills, his innate talent in reaching his students, and his generous contributions to ongoing professional learning among his peers and aspiring educators. She said, "He has all of the characteristics that epitomize a Teacher of the Year." And with that, if there's anything left to say, I'm not sure, I'd love to invite Lauren Schnell to say a few words for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just wanna say, it's a real honor to be selected to represent elementary teachers in Lavonia Public Schools. It's, you know, standing here was like a eulogy almost, you know, hearing all these things. It just makes me feel really old, but I, but I have to say that I'm truly blessed. God is great all the time, all the time God is great, and especially true in my life. I've been blessed with so many things. I've been blessed with a really wonderful, supportive family. My wife Liz, who's my best friend and my partner in life, she's so supportive and loving. This'll show you how supportive she is. She even stands by me during the worst two, or the worst times of a teacher's life, those last two weeks in August, the first two weeks in June, and every week surrounding a report card cycle. If that's not true love, I don't know what is. So, thank you, Liz, for standing by me and supporting me. We've been blessed with two beautiful children. Our son Ben is here, our daughter Abby's away at college and couldn't be here tonight, but I wanna thank them for their love and support, and for being students in a district where their father teaches wasn't always easy, but they handled that responsibility with good humor and grace, so I thank them for that. I'd like to thank my mom, who's here tonight, Joan Schnell. From an early age, my mom taught me the value of hard work and instilled in me a really strong work ethic, which I think serves me really well today as a teacher, so thanks, Mom. My dad is also here, Leonard Schnell, and I just wanna thank him for setting examples for me that have guided me throughout my life and continue to guide me today. My mother-in-law's watching from home, she couldn't be here tonight, but hey, Mom. Celia Crass, I just wanna thank her for being my cheerleader and for always supporting me. I have other family members here, my sister Sue, her husband Greg, my sister-in-law Sandy, my niece Megan, so many supportive family members, you just, I'm just really blessed in the area of family. Beginning my career in Lavonia Public Schools, I actually owe it all to Andrea Oakquist, who 21 years ago took a chance on a second career teacher and hired me to teach 5th grade at Johnson Elementary School. And working with Andrea was just an incredible experience. She's such a strong motivational leader, and I think a lot of the qualities I have today are due to working with her and for her serving as a mentor, so thank you, Andrea. I've been, I've been really blessed to work with so many gifted and talented teachers throughout my career, and it's really hard to name names because you always forget someone, but I'm gonna try to mention some people. In my early years at Johnson Elementary School, I worked with Nancy Loret, Shawn Parsons, Lori Morgan, and John Redman. And a shout-out to all my Johnson friends who are here tonight, hey. I became a Taylor Tiger and worked with Mary Beth Lorenz and Dawn Langston. Hey to all my Taylor alumni that are here tonight. At Hoover Elementary with Kathy Larabel, Dawn Langston, Colleen Cowher, Roseanne Stark, all the Hoover Rockets in the house, thanks for being here. And my current round of teaching partners, Lori Schley, Lisa Werner, Carmen Nemec, who I was lucky enough to teach with for one year at Roosevelt, she was also my student when I student taught at Kennedy, so that really made me feel old too, but she's, but it was really cool to see her in her professional career, growing from that 10-year-old to this accomplished young woman today. And my latest teacher partner, Lindsay Freitag. All these people have made me a better person, they, they challenge my thinking, they, they go along with my crazy ideas, they keep me grounded, and I just wanna thank each and every one of them. With my years working at Central Office, I had some incredible mentors and who are now friends, Bridget Regan, Jen Abler, Mitzi Costelli, Roseanne Stark, Christine Finkel. A lot of the things that I've learned about teaching children, reading and writing, I learned from those ladies, and I thank them. As was mentioned, I guess I've been a literacy leader for over 10 years, which is incredible to me. But the first round, there were four of us, Catherine Barnes, Roseanne Stark, and Patty Cook, and I learned a lot from going into those ladies' classrooms and having them come into my classroom and, and help me to be reflective on my teaching, so I thank them. And the literary, literacy leaders in general in elementary school, it's a tremendous group of people that, that again, challenged my thinking, pushed my, my, my ideas about education, and they're really great people. So to all the elementary literacy leaders out there, present and former, you guys rock, and you've just been an inspiration to me. I've also had the, the opportunity to work with some amazing administrators, starting with Andrea Oakquist, Richard Steele, Sheila Alice, Kay DePero, and currently I work for Bill Green. And these people have incredible integrity and are very inspiring leaders, and just great models for anyone to follow. And for every building secretary, superintendent, night custodian, support teacher, anyone I've ever worked with, thanks for your friendship, thanks for your senses of humor. I feel really lucky to have been able to work for the Lavonia Public Schools. This district has afforded me with so many outstanding opportunities for professional growth and development, from being a learning, literacy leader to hosting learning labs for two years of sponsorship in the Galileo Leadership Consortium. Every, every day, I'm very grateful to live and work in Lavonia and to work for Lavonia Public Schools. And in closing, I just wanna thank every student and family I've ever had the privilege to work with. I've learned so much from all of you, and I can only hope that you learned a little bit from me as well. And I hope that, that you, the students left their short time with me, or short time together with a sense of, of feeling that they're smart, that they're brave, and that they're competent and capable to take the next step in life and in their education. I'm proud to be a Lavonia Public School teacher, and I'm very grateful to all of you. Thank you so much.
Moving on, we'll start with our next honoree. If I could have Middle School Teacher of the Year, Michael Race, join me at the podium? Okay, and trustee Liz Jarvis, if you would please join us as well to read the resolution.
Can you get the pretty one? For the record, I play the flute. Whereas, the trustees of the Board of Education are desirous of recognizing and promoting excellence in education in this school district. And whereas Michael Race, instrumental music teacher at Frost Middle School and an eight-year employee of Lavonia Public Schools, has distinguished himself by being named Middle School Teacher of the Year for 2015-2016 by a district-wide committee of teachers, parents, and administrators. And whereas, in achieving that recognition, it is evident that he is an exceptional educator, going far beyond the expected range of his duties to meet the needs of students, colleagues, parents, and others. And whereas, Michael Race is a talented teacher and musician who employs creative techniques and uses technology in his classroom to further the instruction and instill a passion- and uses technology in his classroom to further the instruction and instill a passion for musical performance in his students. And whereas Michael Race is a respected educator and musician, who has presented for his professional peers at local, state, and national conferences, and has toured nationally as a professional musician. Now therefore, be it resolved that the trustees of the Board of Education do hereby commend and congratulate Michael for being named Middle School Teacher of the Year for 2015-2016, and for the dedication and loyal service he has rendered to Livonia Public Schools, his students, and the community.
Congratulations. Thank you, trustee Jarvis. And now a bit more about Michael Race. Come on up here, don't be shy. First, Michael doesn't just teach middle school instrumental music. He somehow manages to teach five music classes at Frost Middle School and serves as assistant band director at Churchill High School. Mr. Race is so well-liked by his students at Frost that these middle school students, keep in mind, middle school students, they must go home and talk to their parents about him and brag about him to their parents. We have this hunch because the nomination packet contained more than a dozen parents nominating Mr. Race for this award, and they were very detailed nominations. Very impressive. I thought that was so cool. Before I get into some of those remarks, I'd like to share a few facts about Mr. Race and his professional career as a teacher, a lifelong learner, and a professional touring musician. First, Michael is a product of Livonia Public Schools, and I'm not sure which high school did you go to?
Churchill High School.
Churchill High School, okay. I'm a Franklin grad myself. It's all right.
Hall school, you went to hall school, remember that?
And now he teaches 8th grade, chamber orchestra, 8th grade jazz band, 8th grade symphonic band, and two sections of 7th grade concert bands. Last year, he also mentored a Wayne State University student. Michael keeps learning as a member and presenter for numerous professional organizations and spoke several times on the topic of incorporating rock and roll in a classical setting. Very interesting.
That's also my master's project, too.
I like that. When he's not teaching or presenting at conferences, Michael performs as a principal bassist with the Lake St. Clair Symphony Orchestra, and serves as section bassist for the Dearborn Symphony. He is also a founding member of the Detroit Rock String Ensemble called Il Segreto String Orchestra. There are so many other affiliations, but I thought that I would also mention that he's performed with Motown greats such as The Contours, Martha Reeves, Shades of Blue, Eddie Holman, Sonny Turner, and The Platters, just to name a few. In his spare time, he also serves as a music director at Crosspoint Community Church.
Used to.
Used to, okay, that's a former. I knew there would be one of those in there, in the city of Wayne. As we can clearly see, Michael is passionate about music, but he's even more passionate about inspiring his students to follow their musical passions as well. Parents expressed their appreciation for Mr. Race's enthusiasm, genuine concern, limitless talent, and creative approaches to musical instruction and growth. One of the more creative lessons I was personally able to witness in his class came about a year and a half ago, I think, when his students were learning and practicing a piece of music they had planned for a performance at a festival music competition. Because Michael received a grant from the LPS Education Foundation, he was able to Skype with the composer of that piece. Cool, was that? It was so neat to see. The composer sat, and I forget his name at this moment, but...
It was Liz, where is it?
Bill Himes.
Bill Himes, yes.
Yes. Mr. Himes was able to sit and listen and critique the kids as they played his piece, and he offered them feedback so that they could go on to festival competition and perform it flawlessly. What a unique opportunity for those students. And this is just one of the great, one of the many grants that have opened educational opportunities for Michael's students. He said, here's a quote, "I'm always striving for the best in my students. I make clear and obtainable expectations for my students to achieve. I do not expect my students to perform or act in a way that I do not model or demonstrate. Every day in my classroom, I get 100% from the students because I put 100% into preparing my lessons and teaching the students with all of my passion and emotion." One parent writes this about Michael. "Mr. Race has many exceptional qualities and strong personal characteristics, which include integrity and a tremendous passion for giving our kids a strong sense of accomplishment and belonging. He always makes his kids feel valued and cared for." Another parent writes, "Students admire and strive to be all they can be by playing their best for Mr. Race." Another parent wrote, and I'm only picking a few comments out of the many, many that were included in the packet. Another parent writes that her son was not college-bound until he spent time before, during, and even after school with Mr. Race. He said, this parent said, "Now my son wants to go to college and be a music teacher." The list of praise literally goes on for pages and pages, but I will conclude with a comment from his former principal, Chris Berry, who said this. "Although LPS has numerous outstanding teachers who are deserving of this award, Michael Race, his work, his ethic, his passion, dedication, and prowess has put him into a league of his own." And with that, with all of that, and I barely scratched the surface, I'd like to invite Michael to say a few words as well.
I don't know where to begin, a little speechless here. I was a product of Livonia Public Schools. I went to hall school in elementary, Frost Middle School for middle school and Churchill High School, and I've been pretty blessed and fortunate to be able to get a lot of opportunities in music, to study with a lot of well-known artists, one of them being a bassist, you know, at the time being in 6th grade and learning double bass, and studying with this guy named Al Martin, played with this person named Billy Holiday. I was like, what, and this old guy, and just teaching me stuff, it was just fantastic. And be able to play with some great jazz musicians, being a 12-year-old playing with guys that are 56-years-old, I could just play around me all day long and just learning that stuff. And so I've had a lot of opportunities growing up to be able to study with musicians and being in a lot of different performance opportunities. For me, growing up, that was fantastic and something that I wanted to bring back as a teacher now here for LPS. I did my student teaching, and actually I taught for half a year in Birmingham Public Schools, and when I found out Livonia was there, I was like, oh, I got to come back. I want to bring back what I was fortunate to be able to get along the ways. And, you know, just like, I mean, I got a lot of people to thank, I mean, as far as being one of them that was very supportive of me from the very get-go and growing up was my mom, who's right here, this is Elaine, Elaine Race, who's supported me all the way from the private lessons to the instruments, to the being behind me, coming to all the performances and everything, and listening to me, rattled the house with my bass, and, you know, listened to every style of music. And, you know, growing up actually listening to a lot of the Motown and Michael Jackson, a lot of different styles, I spent hours at night with my parents, you know, putting on the records and listening to different things. Coming along the way, I got an opportunity from, I'm going to start getting into history here, at the time Mrs. Gray, but now Mrs. Wickman, her first year teaching in Frost, I was a 6th grader and I was playing with her jazz band, and played all the way through high school and coming back from college and playing a little bit with them and working with the students. And then I have a lot of great people that influenced me along the ways, some of them being, like I said, Mrs. Wickman, retired orchestra teacher, Mrs. Butler, Joyce Butler, who's been influencing me. Both of them were definitely inspired to for me to become a music teacher. I kind of knew that when I was a middle schooler, that that's the route I wanted to go, and definitely, of course, perform, but definitely teach, and I had some great learning from them. Then come into high school, I had a great teacher too, Jim Murphy, who was actually at Johnson, so it's kind of cool to have his students come to me. It's fantastic to be able to work with him, phenomenal musician. And then just near the tail end of my graduation in the senior year, then Liz Herring came into LPS. You were there beforehand, right? So I got to, you know, work under Liz, who's phenomenal, and to be able to work side-by-side with her now is just an amazing thing. I mean, there's some amazing teachers here, and especially music teachers, and I've been fortunate enough to, I mean, to just still learn and even learn from them as well. I mean, there's so many great teachers, and I'm totally honored to, honored as a teacher of the year, and I mean, a lot of this is not, you know, possible with people like, I mean, I'm going to give props to Elizabeth Herring, Heather Wickman, Joyce Butler, Al Martin, a lot of the teachers I had in the DSO, Max Chenowski, Derek Weller, Steve Molina, Kiprus Markou, Doug Bianchi, a lot of these people that have influenced me along the way to just really put the fire in me to learn and play and practice and work hard. And now that I have the opportunity as a teacher to be able to share these with these students, these opportunities that normally that they wouldn't have anywhere else, and either by being through Skype, by bringing in technology, bringing in composers, and, you know, other artists, and to be able to watch Detroit Symphony Orchestra live right there in the classroom, and for kids to tweet the DSO and ask questions and communicate with them, and compose music with technology like with no flight, to, you know, give them that exposure there, to use things like Smart Music that Liz and I both use in the classroom with students, kind of the Guitar Hero of the band orchestra world that allows them to get personal feedback of their rhythms and notes, what's right and wrong in there they can fix. And to be able to bring these to the students is just, I feed off of them, I feed off their energy. A lot of people are like, yeah, a lot of energy, and it's like, because I get it from them, you know, when I see them getting those notes correct and those phrasings and be able to play musically at such a young age, it's awesome. And to be able to watch these students, because for me, most of my students go to Churchill, but to be able to watch them go from 6th grade level, I get to go down there and visit them, all the way through their senior year of playing up at Churchill, it's just, it's an awesome thing, and each one of those students has a story, and I mean, I can go on and on with each one of those kids that from struggling with ranges to, you know, just behavior that grew into they want to go into music, I mean, just so many things that I've seen, and it's just, to me, that's just awesome, and you know, you can't get paid enough or anything except for that just experience of just working with these students on a daily basis, just awesome. It's awesome. So, but I just want to say hi to some people I have here tonight, I just want to introduce some. My mom Elaine Race, who's been supportive of me all the way throughout, this is my girlfriend Abby Taylor, her parents are here, Dawn and Sharon, my brother Brandon Race, our principals here, Shannon Wheeler, and Tony Abate, Elizabeth Herring from Churchill High School, she's also team teaches me 8th grades, it's an awesome thing we get to do every day, I love working side-by-side with her, and retired principal from Frost, Chris Berry here, and where's my other friends, if you want to see her? But I'd like to thank them for being out here tonight, so, but other than that, it's a total honor and I appreciate being LPS employee. I'm totally honored, thank you guys so much.
Okay, and now I'd like to introduce Mrs. Julie Cosgrove to the community, join me if you will. And if I could ask trustee Dan Centers to join us as well, and trustee Centers will read the board resolution, it includes Julie Cosgrove.
I don't want to break the pattern here, so I have never picked up a flute. However, however, I did take algebra. So, with that being said, whereas the trustees of the Board of Education are desirous of recognizing and promoting excellence in education in this school district, and whereas Julie Cosgrove, an algebra and international baccalaureate math teacher at Franklin High School, and a 19-year employee of the Livonia Public Schools District, has distinguished herself by being named High School Teacher of the Year for the 2015-2016 school year by a district-wide committee of teachers, parents, and administrators, and whereas in achieving that recognition, it is evident that she is an exceptional educator, going far beyond the expected range of her duties to meet the needs of students, colleagues, parents, and others. And whereas Julie believes in meeting students' learning styles through a variety of creative and interactive means, always engaging her students in the lessons and challenges them to succeed, and whereas Julie serves as a role model for her students through her extensive community service and volunteer leadership, both inside the school building and out in the greater community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the trustees of the Board of Education do hereby commend and congratulate Julie Cosgrove for being named High School Teacher of the Year for the 2015-2016 year, and for the dedication and loyal service as she has rendered to Livonia Public Schools, her students, and the community.
Okay, so my turn to brag about you a little bit. Julie Cosgrove is a third-generation educator who teaches math at Franklin High School. Julie teaches the high-level international baccalaureate math courses as well as standard-level math courses at Franklin. Her career path was pretty much predetermined from a young age, as evidenced by the early jobs that she had, including babysitter, tutor, dance teacher, and camp counselor. She said in her nomination packet, "Being an educator is my true calling." Julie believes that there is no one-size-fits-all when it comes to learning, and that she must find what works for every student, every day, in every school year. The following are just some examples that demonstrate the type of educator, professional, and role model we have in Julie Cosgrove. When students ask if she will attend their performance in a school play, she buys a ticket. When class council members want to try out a new idea for a fundraiser, she supports them. When students perform poorly on an assessment, she offers retakes. When a plea goes out for dance chaperones, she responds, "You are brave." When students do not understand the importance of doing well in high school or their options for higher education, she plans a trip to visit local colleges and universities. When any student, not just those on her class roster, need help, she will stay well past 2:57 PM to help. When students need to earn community service hours, she takes them to feed homeless people in Detroit on a Saturday morning, or she trains them to be early literacy volunteers. Julie said, "I can never predict which of my actions will finally motivate a particular student, so I just keep strategically trying new things until something works." Julie also has a very long list of involvement at the school and at the district and county level. Just to run through a few of those, she is Franklin's representative on the Algebra I Committee. She participated in the Algebra for All and Project Prime through Wayne Risa, and she's been a presenter on the Common Core Test for Algebra I. She is also the FHS Junior Class Advisor, LPS Gymnastics Scorekeeper, is that still the case?
Score Collector.
Okay, score collector. FHS CrossFit Club Advisor, an Early Literacy Volunteers Advisor, Community Service Volunteer Recruiter, Franklin Senior Honors Night Organizer, and she enjoys leading the Junior Girl Scouts. I think it's at Riley, are you at Riley or Riley and?
I was at Riley, yes.
Okay, formerly at Riley Elementary, for elementary.
And Hoover.
And Hoover, yes. As if that is not enough, she can be found on most Saturday mornings packaging food and delivering to the homeless in Detroit through the PB&J outreach, as a PB&J outreach volunteer. Colleague Terry Bennett said Julie is a positive example of compassion, dedication, and hard work to every student she encounters. She said the most valuable qualities Julie offers to her students are her high standards and her leadership through example. She goes on to say that Julie is a reflective teacher who takes pride in providing students with lessons that help them deepen their mathematical understanding. She is regarded as a teacher who has well-planned lessons and who is willing to adjust lessons to better the outcome for student learning. Franklin Principal Dan Wollenborg had this to say about Julie. "Ms. Cosgrove serves students in the district in an exemplary manner. She is highly professional in all that she does, and through her talented planning and personal style, students quickly realize that she loves her work as a teacher. She builds strong and positive relationships with her students and mixes well the seriousness of effort and hard work with the creative fun of learning new concepts. She is always ahead of the curve in terms of integrating technology into her lessons. She is a master teacher who every day models the finest characteristic..." teacher who every day models the finest characteristics of the teaching profession. And with that, I invite Julie Cosgrove to say a few words. Thank you.
Good evening. Congratulations to Lauren and Michael. And I played the cello. I had to throw that out there, too. So, someone asked me how it felt to be named Teacher of the Year, and I joked that it was the realization of both my greatest dream and my worst nightmare. It is my greatest dream, because it's pretty awesome to be unexpectedly recognized by my peers and employer for doing something that I love, and to which I've devoted the past 20 years of my life. On the other hand, I've spent my career highlighting my students' successes and putting them in the spotlight, a place in which I am extremely uncomfortable. But this evening, I will put my fears aside and seize the one-time opportunity to publicly express my gratitude to all of those who have contributed most to my development as a teacher and as a human. So, here goes. Thank you to the Teacher of the Year Committee for selecting me as this year's high school recipient, and to the Livonia Public Schools Administration and School Board for this great honor. Thank you to Mike Fenchel, former principal of Franklin High School, for hiring me to work in this great district, and for hiring the wonderful man who would eventually become my husband. Thank you to Dan Wollenborg, current principal of Franklin, for always trusting in me and in my professionalism. Thank you, too, to Dan and Jenna Sparza for orchestrating my Teacher of the Year announcement. There are very few unexpected joyous surprise moments in life, and I will always treasure the memory of that one. Thank you to all of my students, past, present, and future, who make my job an interesting and fun challenge, and are the reasons I come to work every day. Thank you to my Franklin colleagues and my math department friends. I am proud to work at Franklin with the most amazing and dedicated people. Thank you to the staff and students of the Franklin Transition Program. I love what we have created together in the Franklin High School Community Service Class. Thank you to Terry Bennett, who nominated me for this award and tirelessly petitioned to get me here. Thank you to Angela Jenkins, Mary Beth Clowinder, Jennifer Abler, and Mary Kay Hussey. These LPS teachers have been my role models since very early in our careers, and I am so lucky that I have these women with whom I can laugh, and cry, and work out, and travel, and get professional and personal advice, and spend girls' weekends doing yoga and drinking wine. Thank you to my parents, my sister, brother, and their families for everything they have ever done for me. I wish every child could grow up in a supportive family like mine that values public education, lifelong learning, and compassion for and service to others. Thank you to my children, Kara and Evan, for being caring, loving, intelligent, talented, humorous, supportive children that they are. They inspire me to be a better teacher and parent. At last, but certainly not least, thank you to my husband, Dan, for being my number-one cheerleader throughout all of these years, and for working so hard to provide for our family. Twenty years ago, when we met as newly hired teachers, he kindly offered to help me hang my bulletin board paper.
He's small.
Little did we both know at that time what God had planned for us. I am extremely honored to be here tonight with Lauren and Michael, and to follow in the footsteps of all of the previous Teachers of the Year. I wish all teachers who work relentlessly to support our students could experience the greatest dream part of being a Teacher of the Year. So, I dedicate this award to them. Thank you very much for this award.
That's all I have, except maybe one more round of applause for all three of our Teachers of the Year.
As far as board action goes, with every motion, we have the joy, in this case, of voting on this motion, which I'm pretty sure I know how it's gonna go. We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. McDonnell. Are there any questions or comments from board members before we vote on this motion?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I think that's pretty unanimous.
Well, please, sir.
It is. Mrs. McDonnell, I'm sorry, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Laura.
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations. As is customary with our Board of Education, following congratulatory events like we've had this evening, our board is going to take a short break for five to 10 minutes so that we can congratulate the honorees of this evening. Typically, we've all been raised that it's very rude to get out and walk out in the middle of a meeting. In this case, it's not so rude. You are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the business of our evening, but if you choose to leave after congratulating our nominees, you may feel free to do so. We will be at recess for the next five to 10 minutes. Good evening. Welcome to the remainder of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Meeting of October 19th, 2015. If you're following along from home, we are now at item 3B on our agenda, written communications. Do any board members have written communications they would like to share with the board? Nope, seeing none. We are on to item 3C, audience communications. Audience communications is a time that the board sets aside to listen to members of the public. We do have an amount of time that we designate to this at each one of our meetings. We do ask that each participant honor the three-minute limit so that everyone does have an equal opportunity to be heard. Also, it is a time when the board is here to listen to the public. It is not a time of questions and answers. If more information is needed, we may address or ask administration to get further information for the board, but at this time, it'll be a time for the board to listen to the public. Our first speaker is Jennifer, and I'm going to ask, thank you very much for the pronunciation of your last name.
No problem. Hi, I was here last month at the board meeting. Good evening. My name is Jennifer J. Check. I was here last month regarding the ECP program at Jackson Early Childhood Center. I did receive, I did receive a letter from the interim superintendent Andrea Oquas, thank you, with answers to my questions, but I still have concerns about the building. I did contact Dr. Jennifer Terrell, and we did set up a visit to Jackson Center with her, where I voiced my concerns. I want to be very clear, my concerns are not with any of the teachers, paraprofessionals, support staff from the ECP program, or any of the staff that was at Jackson Early Childhood Center prior to Perrinville closing. I feel that the ECP staff is doing an exceptional job considering what they have been given to work with. My concerns pertain to the facility itself. The building is quite dated in comparison to other schools in the district. I understand that the licensing rules are different for childcare centers and school codes. I would hope that the board would choose the best practices for all of the children that attend Jackson Early Childhood Center, as the building adjusts to its combined status as a childcare center and school for the ECP program. The outside fenced playground is appreciated, thank you. However, some of the equipment is damaged, and compared to Perrinville, the fenced playground is significantly smaller. There's no covered area to protect the children and staff from the sun and any inclement weather that may occur. I'm sure all of the children would benefit with playground improvements, including swings, if possible. I've noticed that at Jackson, there are no swings, neither inside or outside. I know children in the ECP program really enjoy them. At Perrinville, there were two in the climbing room, and then there were swing sets outside with the proper swings for the children. The gym at Jackson Early Childhood Center is much smaller than the one at Perrinville, because it is used as two separate rooms. There's a hanging curtain between. At Perrinville, there was a gym and a climbing room for the ECP children. The climbing room had a climbing wall. There were some play structures indoors to use in inclement weather, and there were the two swings. Again, there are no swings whatsoever at Jackson. I understand that the building received an electrical upgrade and added technology data for the additional ECP usage, and that the ECP rooms have phone jacks. Four rooms received new air conditioners. There are still three rooms that are using older and louder air conditioners than what they had at Perrinville. First day of school, when it was just an hour for parents and children, the, sorry, the lights went off multiple times, and the teacher had to turn the air conditioner off so that she could talk to us. They did fix that, which is great. Overall, there is, the building is dated. Changing tables are atrocious. Bathroom situation, they replaced...
If you could conclude your comments, please.
Okay. They replaced urinal with a changing table. At some point, there was talk about combining ECP and ASD at Jackson.
I'm really sorry, but I do have to ask you to conclude your comments in order to be fair to all of the speakers.
Okay. In conclusion, I would like to know what the board is going to do about the building at Jackson, and when they're going to make changes.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ron Rigil.
Hello, my name is Ron Rigil. I live at 37204 Brend, and that's Willowood Sub. That's between Seven and Eight Mile Road off of Newburgh. And I'm here today because the school buses, they stop right in front of my sub, which is a one-way in and a one-way out. And before I came here, I went to the city council, and the city council directed me to the sign board for no parking signs. So, I went to that board meeting, and they were more concerned about the parents, after they put up no parking signs, would flood their office and the safety of the children. So, I'm here in front of you right now to let you know that summertime, or even in the wintertime, the bus stops right in front of the subdivision, and if it's snowing real bad, like it has the last couple of years, the parents, they park about two or three inches away from the curb, and there's a media in between for about three houses on each side. So, it's really, it's really hard to maneuver through all that with the snow, and the cars being so on the inside of the road instead of closer to the curb. So, I worry about the kids getting off the bus. Some of them just jump off the bus and start running. They don't look. And so, you're worrying about hitting a car, and you're worrying about hitting a kid. So, I'm asking the school board if there's any way that they can have the bus either come into the subdivision, or drop them off at Greenmead, so the parents can go there to pick up their kids. So, that's why I'm here today.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker we have tonight is Jake Emmerich. Mr. Emmerich?
Good evening. I wanted to bring a couple of things to your attention. I have a son that goes to Webster Elementary, my daughter goes to Buchanan Elementary. Both great schools, great staff. I have no complaints as far as that goes. There were magazines ordered at the beginning of the school year at Webster, Scholastic magazines that the children are required to do assignments out of. The PTA generously donated a lot of money to pay for those magazines. The remainder of the bill was passed on to the parents. We weren't asked, we were told, to send in $12. And when I didn't send it in, I got a friendly reminder, nothing nasty, asking for my payment. And when that didn't get sent in, my child was called to the teacher's desk for four days straight, asking if he had his money for the magazines. State of Michigan requires that the district pays for these magazines, and I don't know why we're being asked to pay for them. On the heels of that, last week, my daughter came home from Buchanan, and they're having an in-school field trip coming up, and I'll pass the flyer on to you, but again, we weren't asked for this field trip, but we are asked to pay $6.50. Is it gonna break me? No. I donate to the classes, I donate to the PTA, I spend money on extracurricular activities, I contribute school supplies. That's what I wanted to address with you. Also, the phone system at Buchanan still has the summer recording on it. Last year, I addressed this. I'm gonna do it again this year, because there was another mix-up. It was a miscommunication. My daughter didn't get on the bus. She wasn't, regardless, they called, she didn't get on the bus. The school called me, and right away, I said, "Can I have a good phone number to call you back yet?" They said, "Yep, here's the number." I called, and I got the summer recording. I was very disappointed. And, let me see, and when that recording is changed, just a suggestion, that if we could have something on there, "Hey, if there's an emergency, please contact Transportation, here's their phone number," or email the principal, just some way to get ahold of somebody. And lastly, I want to address all the flyers that come home from all these organizations, that soccer, athletic places, karate. When I get these, and I'm sure other parents get them, you almost feel as if the district's endorsing these places. I don't know if anybody's looking into these places to see if they're reputable. There's a couple that came home with me that I was a little skeptical on, and was curious as to, how does somebody go about getting their flyers passed out? Does the school district get money from all these places? I hope they do, because that's great advertising. That's it. Great. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Emmerich. The next speaker we have is Lauren Peters.
Hi, my name's Lauren Peters. I have a son at Buchanan and a daughter at Grant. I guess I'm here because I watched the meeting from a couple weeks ago, and something really stood out and angered me. I watched Mrs. McDonnell request specific financial statements, I believe it was the chart of accounts, and I watched you all sit here and deliberate and come up with 5 million reasons why you don't need access to that. No one ever asked how much time it takes to produce those statements. There is no substance to what any of you were saying, and I feel like everything you were saying goes against what a board is for. You are here to be the checks and balances for this district. Just today in the Detroit News, you're seeing another article where the CEO of Chicago Public Schools is now in trouble for, is gonna go to court for corruption. We had it in Detroit, we had it in Atlanta, we have all these districts. Now, I'm not saying that this is happening here, but how you all don't want transparency to all those statements is beyond me. And why there's this need for there to be a majority before one of you can get these statements is bizarre, too. I'm an accountant. The company that I work for, I mean, it's a pretty major company, and we have a board of directors, and whatever they want, we provide. And that's pretty much everything. So, it's really bizarre to me when a board of directors is coming up with reasons for why they don't need information. I've been watching this for months and months. I saw when Dr. Lipa was leaving, I read all your comments in the newspaper, and you're all saying things like, "It's been so great having him. We could trust everything he was saying. We could defer to him on everything. He knew what he was doing." That's not what you guys are here for. You're here to oversee them. And instead, I constantly see you sitting back and letting them make all the decisions. It's a scary thing for the rest of us. We're all noticing that this is happening now. There's absolutely no reason why, if a board member wants certain financial statements, why they can't have it. And it's very bizarre when you're all sitting here coming up with reasons to not give that person that. It kind of gives off the vibe of collusion. I'm not saying that's happening, but it's suspicious, highly suspicious. I think it would make more sense for you guys to just say, "You know what? If someone wants something, just have it." It doesn't mean that you all have to sit here and have extended meetings about, "What does each line item in here say?" is each line item in here saying. You know, all the stuff that you guys went into, that makes absolutely no sense. If somebody wants the statements, give them the statements. This happens in private business. It should be happening here in a public school district.
Okay. Our next speaker is Jody White.
Because I'm going on, because Mrs. McDonald also helped me with my bullying situation, and no one else has contacted me except her. So I don't know why no one else has contacted me. I just got this beautiful note because my son was defending himself this, on October 5th, and he was in a classroom defending himself, and he got a suspension. See, Ms. Cullen, so you say it's not being investigated. We know it's not because it's still happening. And this is exactly the document I'm waiting to get from Mr. Lewis when my son was bullied last year, and Keith McDonald and Andrew Hess put a PPO on my son. So you have all the documents. There it was. I'm waiting for the written communication. I've been, Jill's been awesome. I have a meeting with the superintendent, which I'm excited for. I'm going to be talking to Mr. Winery, which I've asked not to meet with him, and Mr. Archibald, which again, I don't want to meet with him. I want to meet with the people that I have a problem with, which is the school administration over at Churchill High School. I'm asking for the same thing this lady is. So you couldn't have come at a better time. Because I've been, this is what, my ninth or 10th time coming? I have only one person meeting me. I voted for about three of you. You're an attorney, I've told you that a couple of times, waiting for you. I have been talking to the MMRMA. They are going to help me file a claim for professionalism because you guys have the administrative policies and you're not following them. And again, I noticed this is what I've been waiting for. So why do I get it when my son's defending himself? Because he's being bullied again at your school. So I love the school, too. My son loves the school. We just would like Keith McDonald and Andrew Hess and Mrs. Bird and Mr. London, London Lewis to kind of fix what they started, because you guys have all the paperwork, and nobody else is called but her. So why is that? And when do I get my written documentation? Because I filed a complaint. I have a written complaint, and I also have a policy committee with Ms. Laura, who's the chair, and with Ms. Bonfield and Ms. McDonald. So do I, do I schedule an appointment with you guys next? Is that, you know, it was in the package. Well, it was handed to her, so I don't know, do you, do we meet, or when do we talk about the safe environment of our school that's not safe? Because our students are defending themselves, because we have to, because the administration, oh, we did get Mr. E2 involved, and he wants to tell us that our son has to follow the report, because you guys don't write it first. And my husband wants a back-and-forth document, like a real estate contract, where we write something, you write something, we write something, because we've lost paperwork with your school district, which you understand as an attorney, how important the paperwork is. And Dana Winery can write whatever he wants, and he investigates whatever he wants. All of it's in emails. I cannot wait to show you everything. I have it all in writing. And I'm just praying that you do do something, because everyone said really nice things, and a couple of people said nice things about you, and I'm looking forward to some answers, because my son is not getting this letter. It needs to be removed from his file, and I want a discussion, because Mrs. Hunter doesn't even know about anything that happened last year, because she took Mr. Lewis's place and was given no copy of the compiled report that you said he followed up with but never investigated. We know. So again, a couple of days, I'll be meeting you, and I have, you know, a pack of paper, and hopefully, you've taken the time to view the stuff I've given you already. And I hope to talk with Ms. Laura also. And thank you for all you've been doing.
Mrs. White, I'm not the chair of the policy committee.
Well, then, then, then just like the phone messages, the website might be long. So if there's somewhere I can fix it, that'd be great. Whoever the chair of the policy committee would be, I, I just would like to kind of check about it. So, and I'll see you next month.
For the benefit of the public, because this item has been brought forth to the board several times, in response to prior audience communications from Mrs. Jody White, I would like to share that the incident which took place in the fall of 2014 has been investigated and reported upon by school administration as is appropriate.
Good, then I'll FOIA the report. I'll FOIA the report.
Excuse me, Mrs. White, you've had your turn.
May I have, I'm going to FOIA this report that she's talking about, just so you know.
Mrs. White, I respectfully ask you to sit down. You have had your turn. I respectfully ask you-
It'll be FOIA'd. Okay. So go ahead. Can't wait to get it. Go ahead.
Since that time, the district has responded to FOIA requests as required by law and where it has had the capacity to do so. Any information being requested from another agency, such as the Police Department, cannot be provided by Livonia Public Schools. At this time, no new information has come forward, which would require the school or the district administration to reopen this case. All appropriate and necessary actions have been taken and have been communicated to the White family. The next item on our agenda is item four, Consent Agenda.
Mrs. Burton, before we-
Yes.
-go any further, one, we did talk about this in our, our board workshop last week, that a lot of people do approach us, and they're not exactly sure what our role is with the Board of Education. Could you define that for the public, just so they're aware of what our role and responsibility is by law?
Yes, I would be happy to do so. And Mrs. Okus, if you'd like to add anything, you may feel free to jump right in. The role of the Board of Education is threefold. The role of the Board of Education is to set policy for the district. The role of, the Board of Education is further to hire and oversee the superintendent of the district, who is charged with running the day-to-day operations, including all employees of the district, other than him or herself. The last role of the Board of Education is to set strategic goals or long-term planning for the district. Those three roles are the exclusive role of the Board of Education. The role of all day-to-day operations of the districts rests with the superintendent and all administration and staff of the district. The superintendent does have ultimate authority over the runnings of the day-to-day operations of the district. Therefore, the Board of Education, on items where we are being asked to involve ourselves in the day-to-day operations of the district, the role of the Board of Education does refer as to policy and state law to the superintendent of the district to handle that, as he or she sees appropriate. In response, it is the role of the Board of Education to evaluate the superintendent in the performance of those duties. Thank you. Is there anything else, Mrs. Okus, that you'd like to add to that item?
Nothing further, however. We will respond to the audience communications from this evening on behalf of the Board of Education.
Thank you. Mr. Centers, is that, in answer to your question, or is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I think that'll be a good clarification. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on our agenda tonight is item four, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Bonfield.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approved the following Consent Agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. 5A, minutes of the regular meeting of September 21, 2015. 5B, minutes of the special meeting of September 28, 2015. 5C, minutes of the closed session of September 28, 2015. 6A, approval of adult and continuing education program of study. And 7A, bills for payment, October 20, 2015.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonfield, supported by Mr. Centers. Are there any questions or comments from the board on this item? Nope. All right. Seeing as we have no questions, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonfield, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonfield, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. If board members can pass down their minutes of the closed session. The next item on our agenda is item 7B, Approval of Bid Results for LMC Lighting Projects at Cleveland and Rosedale. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. McDonald.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the lowest qualified bidder for lighting replacement at the library medium centers, LMCs, for Cleveland and Rosedale Elementary Schools from Great Lakes Home and Construction, Leonard, Michigan, for a total cost of $28,000.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Johnson. And Ms. Abby, would you like to address this item?
Yes, thank you very much. We are pleased this evening to bring the formal bid results to replace the lighting in the media centers at those two schools, Cleveland and Rosedale. We did have an opportunity to talk about this at our committee meeting recently, and what we're doing across the district is, as we have an opportunity, we are replacing some of the old, very old light fluorescent bulbs in some of our media centers. We've already had a lot of projects at our gymnasiums. As you'll recall, we've gotten most of those done, and now we're working on the media centers. And what we're doing is taking out the very old fixtures, replacing them with fluorescent fixtures, which we will expect to not only bring us up to date in terms of how the lighting will be in the medium centers, but also will provide some efficiencies and some cost savings in the long run. So we're very pleased to be doing this. As we talked about previously, these old fixtures are just becoming outdated. They're not going to be around forever. We won't be able to get those type of bulbs forever, so it is timely for us to do this, and this is a sinking fund project. This was a formal bid, as you know, and we are recommending the lowest vendor, lowest price vendor.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board? Nope. All righty. Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bonfield, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda tonight is item 7C, Approval to Purchase Bulk Road Salt. Not as exciting, but really necessary.
[laughing]
Do we have, can I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
Because I have a salty personality, I'll make this motion.
Support.
That was much too quick. Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approved the purchase of bulk rolled salt through the State of Michigan MyDeal Purchasing Consortium for an approximate total cost of $80,970.
Support.
All righty. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Ms. Abby, would you like to address this item also?
Yes, thank you very much. Again, it's, it's not very exciting until you need it, but as you know, we do need to purchase salt to take care of our parking lots and our entrances throughout the school year. This is an annual purchase. Again, we are purchasing approximately 1,500 tons of road salt at a cost of $53.98 a ton, which as we mentioned last time, we talked about this, about three and a half dollars less than the prior year, so that's good news. Supply and demand, as we talked about, this is purchased through one of the purchasing consortiums, so we didn't have to go out for a formal bid. And we are pleased to bring this recommendation. As you know, we won't take full, we won't take full storage of it right away. We'll take some, and then as we need more, we'll have it available to us. But by putting this agreement in place right now, it will allow us to have the salt that we'll need for this school year.
Are there questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. As a point of interest on the actual paper, we do need to make a correction for the rationale.
Yes. We will make that. Thank you. We will re-sign that to the board.
Thank you.
Ah. Thank you. Okay, great. For the public, it says, the rationale on this says this project will replace the current fluorescent fixtures, which was for the previous motion. This, this purchase obviously will be to provide road salt for the purpose of the district, having safe driveways, parking lots, and sidewalks. The rationale is not part of what the, the actual motion that the board is voting on, it's just the rationale, obviously, behind it. Are there, thank you, Mrs. Jarvis, for catching that. Are there any other questions or comments for the Board of Education? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonfield, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 7D, Approval to Purchase Laptop Computers, 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of 110 laptop computers from Seahigh Computer Products Rochester Hills, Michigan, through the Regional Educational Media Center Cooperative Acquisition Bid Program, RMC, for a total cost of $87,890.90.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Alice or Ms. Abby, which would you, would you like to-
It's Mrs. Alice tonight.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton.
Go right ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I will briefly summarize for the Board of Education the many details that were shared with you about this recommendation during the October 5th Committee of the Hall Meeting. We are recommending that the Board of Education approve the purchase of 110 laptop computers. They are HP Pro Notebooks from Seahigh Computers, Inc. The unit price for each of the computers is $798.19, which brings the total to $87,890.90. And the, and the purpose for these computers is to provide our student services personnel who move from multiple buildings, they have assignments in multiple buildings, to allow them to have computer access. Earlier this year, the Board of Education approved desktop computers for all of our teachers, as well as for our computer, computer labs. Those are replacement computers. For our student services, it made more sense for us to provide them with laptop computers because they have assignments in multiple buildings. So these computers will be for student services personnel that include our school psychologists, social workers, teachers of speech and language impaired students, our occupational therapists, physical therapists, teacher consultants, and program specialists. The quote that we are bringing to you is from RMC. Therefore, we do not need to have an additional quote or additional bids. And we do recommend the approval of this recommendation, please.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board? Mr. Johnson?
President Burton, thank you. Mrs. Alice, this, the, the unit price includes an extended three-year warranty on each computer, isn't it?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Johnson, Mrs. Bonfield?
She'll, I, Mrs. Alice, I apologize for, I don't mean to spring this on you. Just a thought popped into my head, with the laptop computers, we're going to be dealing with a lot of student information. I'm assuming that there's going to be safety measures taken in case those are lost or stolen to maintain the-
Yes, our laptops are password protected.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And just as I-
I want to add to that. We also have appropriate use policies, so whenever any of our staff have materials such as this, there is a very detailed form that is filled out and signed, both by the employee and by their administrator.
Okay.
And it very clearly spells out the expectations for use of materials such as this and in regard to student information.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Centers?
Sorry, sorry. The, when purchasing these, these are coming from the 2013 bond. This is our taxpayer-funded bond that we're using to, among other things, redevelop our schools. So it's not the, the money that's, we use to run buildings or hire our teachers, the day-to-day operations, correct?
That is correct. When we purchased the desktop computers, we had set allocation in our technology portion of our bond, and the desktop computers came in less unexpected. So the funds for purchasing the laptop computers is coming out of the funds that were set aside for the desktop computers. That is all part of our 2013 bond.
Yes, and thank you to the community for supporting this. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonfield, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.[1725.63]
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
On behalf of the student services staff, they thank you for this.
I'm sure they'll be well utilized. The next item on our agenda is Item 8A, Teachers for Approval. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and offer employment for the 2015-2016 school year to the teachers listed on the attached document.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, approach, uh, pr, seconded rather, by Mrs. McDonald. Mr. Winry, would you like to address this item for us?
Yes. These teachers have been interviewed, along with many other applicants, for the vacancies which existed in the instructional programs. We believe these teachers are the most qualified for the positions and recommend that they be approved for employment. I would add that these positions listed are within the 2015-2016 budget.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonfield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 7B, Teachers for Recall. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonfield.
Move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent and recall the district employment as a teacher for the 2015-16 school year. The person listed on the attached document dated October 19, 2015.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonfield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Winry, would you like to address this item?
Yes. Following board authorization on June 8th, to begin the recall procedure, the recall process was initiated. The attached document contains the name of one person who's been recalled. In addition, one teacher has resigned. This leaves two persons remaining on the layoff list from the June 8th layoff list, three persons remaining on the June 2nd 2014 layoff list, two persons remaining from the June 3rd 2013 layoff list, one person remaining on layoff from the June 4th 2012 layoff list, and one person remaining on layoff from the June 7th 2010 layoff list. Again, this position is also within the 2015-2016 budget, and we recommend approval of the motion.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonfield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonfield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 8C, Teachers for Tenure. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Laura?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and grant tenure status to the following teachers effective on the respective dates. Amy Behringer, September 3, 2015. Robert Ho, September 30, 2015. Sharice Howell, September 3, 2015. Lindsay Zurick, October 28, 2015.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Winry, would you like to address this item?
Yes, thank you. Affirmative reports and tenure recommendations have been received from the principals for those four employees listed. Will complete the required years of probation in the Livonia system on the above dates. Accordingly, we recommend approval of the motion.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by the board?
Congratulations.
Congratulations to those teachers. That's right. We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonfield, will you take the role?
Mrs., excuse me. Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 8D, Resignations, and this is not a motion to be voted upon. This is for board information only. The next item on our agenda is 8E, Retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. McDonald?
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciations for the services rendered by Lydia Dorzuski, David Hogan, Leslie Kenzor, and Bradley Schott.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Winry, would you like to address this item?
Thank you. These four employees have served over 82 years combined service for Livonia schools, and these have been very good, dedicated, outstanding years of service. On behalf of the administration, I'd like to express thanks to each of those employees and recommend approval of their, of the motion, please.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations to all of them.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonfield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 9, Reports from the Superintendent. Mrs. Oakwest?
Thank you, President Burton. We have a number of things to share with you this evening. First and foremost, I'd like to thank our Communications Department for preparing our Teacher of the Year celebration this evening. I think Mrs. Jenkins referred to herself as the agent for the Teachers of the Year. There is a tremendous amount of work that goes into that, and so we had a great evening this evening, and I thank everyone who was able to be present. I'd like to share some exciting news. Out of Stevenson High School, we had four Livonia Stevenson students who have distinguished themselves by placing in the 2016 National Merit Scholarship Program. Ian Brinker and Elizabeth Keebler were named National Merit Scholarship semifinalists, and Allison Cale and Jackson O'Dowd earned the honor of being commended in the National Merit Scholarship Program. So, Ian and Elizabeth scored in the top 1% of approximately 1.5 million students nationwide, and Cale and, I'm sorry, Allison and Jackson scored in the top 5% nationally. So, we would certainly like to recognize them and congratulate them. As you know, I won't spend a lot of time in it this evening, but we've been very closely following legislation taking place in Lansing. And so, as you know, of special note, bills related to third-grade reading proficiency and related requirements for the retention of students not meeting established benchmarks is, is something on which we have advocated very strongly. We are looking for legislation that supports the exceptional work of our staff, the growth of our students, and promotes appropriate local control over decisions regarding a student's educational placement. So, know that as this moves on to the Senate, we will continue to be a strong voice in advocacy for the outstanding work that takes place in our multi-tiered support system in each of our schools, and that we believe that any legislation related to mandatory retention of students is not in the best interest of children. We are also following closely the Senate Bill 103 on Teacher Evaluation, which was recently passed and anticipates moving forward. And again, we'll continue to follow that closely as it relates to the evaluation of teachers and administrators. We also recently have had some additional legislation come out regarding educational impact of students. I'll continue to keep the board apprised, and I also recommend that our staff and our parents remain vigilant about advocating for what is in the best interest of the children we serve. We had, I shared with the board, I wanted to share with the public, we recently had a civil rights audit as part of a regular process from the Michigan Department of Education at our Career Technical Center. And I would just like to note a couple of the things mentioned in the report by the external visiting team. They noted the exceptional work taking place on behalf of students. They respond, they commented many times on the clean and well-maintained facilities in our schools. They visited not only the Career Center, they visited Central Office, and that morning, they shared with us that they would also like to visit our three high schools. And so, they spent time in each of our three high schools. They commented on how polite our students were, how receptive our staff was, and I would just like to just share kudos to all involved in this process. Mr. Archibald and Dr. Terrell and Mr. Anderson coordinated an extensive amount of documentation and preparation for the visit, and Livonia was recognized for the many outstanding efforts that they make on behalf of the children we serve. So, I wanted to share that good news with all of you. You may know and receive notification, our parents have received notification, that the Student Gallup Poll is underway for our children in grades five through 12. As the board knows, we are very focused on our district climate goal with regard to having our school environments be safe, welcoming, and positive places for our students and staff to learn and grow each day. We're making strides toward this, and we look forward to sharing the results with you when they come in. Finally, a couple of exciting announcements. We have our foundation luncheon coming up, if you are interested in attending. October 28th, our guest speaker is Barbara McQuade, who is the U.S. Attorney for the Eastern District of Michigan. She is a fascinating local public servant, and she was recently named the 2015 Shining Light Regional Cooperation Award recipient in the Neil Shine Exemplary Regional Leadership category. She is going to be our guest speaker. Our emcee is Steve Courtney, who is always entertaining, and I would assume has a few comments that he'd like to share from the game this past weekend. Either way that you fall on that, I'm assuming he will have a few things to share at our luncheon. So, we certainly invite the public to attend. If you're interested, there is information on our website. And finally, one of our high schools is celebrating their 50th anniversary this week. So, we'd like to acknowledge Livonia Stevenson, who has many activities planned for this coming week. I know a number of us will be attending the ceremony for the original dedication of Stevenson, which will take place on Thursday evening, the homecoming game on Friday, and then the school will be open for any community member, alumni, from 8:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. on Saturday for folks who would like to visit and take a trip down memory lane. So, thank you so much. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. As you can tell, school is in full swing. The next item on our agenda is Item 10A, First Reading of Board Policy, BBBC, Board Member Expenses and Development. Mrs. Oakwest, would you like to give an overview of this?
I would be happy to, President Burton. As you know, we, taking a look at the, an excerpt from the Revised School Code entitled "Expenses of Board Members and Employees' Expenditures and Policies as Public Record, Payments, Credit, or Debit Card." We've taken that portion of the Revised School Code and taken a look at our board policies related to that. As you know, we encourage and applaud our board members for furthering their professional growth and development, and toward that end, we have revised our policies to better align with the state statute. And so, if I, I'd like to just take a couple of minutes to go through the first policy you have in your packet, BBBC. You'll note that the areas in red are the areas that we're recommending revision, and I'd like to just briefly highlight what that language spells out for our board. Again, we encourage our board to continue to take part in professional development opportunities, and when they do so, that, we may either pay for those costs directly from the district. So, district, direct district expenditures must be approved by the board at a voting meeting prior to the expense being incurred. That's one section of this policy. The second is individual board members seeking reimbursement for an expense must be approved at a voting meeting prior to the payment of the reimbursement to the board member. And then, the third that requires a vote of the board is any expenditure of district funds that exceeds $500 per event or includes overnight travel. Whether it is a direct district expenditure or board reimbursement, must have prior approval at a board meeting. And you'll see an example of that this evening. We actually do have a recommendation this evening for a board member attending the MAS B conference. So, these costs are regarding registration fees, cost of travel, lodging, or meals, not including alcoholic beverages. And then, the district's standard expense reporting procedures and the same per diem rates and mileage rates of employees of the district would be followed. So, we've laid out this policy to better delineate the areas of, for which board members may either have expenses paid or be reimbursed. In both cases, those must be approved by the board at a voting board meeting. I'd like to make one note. On the bottom of that page, you'll see that there's a legal reference to the Michigan compiled law. The legal reference, it says, updated 3/12/07. We will actually be modifying that to read 4/12/15. So, we will send that out to you in your packet, and that will be updated to reflect on the current board policy. So, we are recommending this evening that we move forward with the first reading of this policy, and then we will be, bring it back for a second reading prior to board approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions on this particular policy? We have three that are going to, or actually four that are going to move together, so. No questions on this policy? Alrighty. This policy will then be voted upon at our next voting meeting in November. The next item on our agenda is 10B, First Reading of Board Policy, BBBE, Board Member Compensation and Expenses. Mrs. Oakwest, can you continue?
Thank you. As you know, we've spent some time on this at both our study session and our committee meeting, but just to take a moment, if you'll take a look at the lower section of BBBE, you will see that we have a strikeout of the areas listed under the section "Reimbursement for Expenses." This area is now tied into the previous policy that we will be adopting. Therefore, it is no longer necessary to have that portion be part of BBBE. So, we will update that. We will remove that portion of it and update the date.
Okay. Any questions on this particular policy? Again, that policy will also go on the agenda for a vote in November. Next item is 10C, Removal of Board Policy, BBBEE, reimbursable expenses of board members.
I'm glad you had to say that first.
Yes. We'll go slowly.
So, as part of our Livonia Public Schools Board Policy Procedure for Changes, we are required to bring the deleting of any board policies to the board for approval, as well as any adoption or amendment of board policies. So, we are recommending the removal of BBBEE, reimbursable expenses of board members, because this, the portion of, actually, this entire policy has now been incorporated into Board Policy, BBBC. And so, that has, all of the intent of that language in that policy has now been incorporated into our new policy. Therefore, it renders this useless, and so we would recommend removal of this board policy from the board.
Are there any questions on this particular policy? Alrighty. Can you give this motion? The next item on our agenda is Item 10D, Approval of Board Member to Attend MAS B Annual Leadership Conference and Participate in CBA Class. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Laura?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the attendance, participation in board member certification classes, which are called CBAs. The overnight travel of Board Trustee Mark Johnson for the MAS B Annual Leadership Conference, October 22nd through the 25th, 2015, and Grants, Traverse, Michigan.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Oakwest, is there anything you'd like to add to this item?
No, but other than per our board policy, this would be, this would certainly meet the guidelines of needing to bring forward for voting approval from the board. It is within our prescribed budget allocations, and we appreciate trustee Johnson for representing the Board of Education, not only at the conference, but at our delegate meeting in Traverse City this year.
Are there any other questions or comments on this item? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you. Just for clarification, so I understand, even though this board policy changes haven't been implemented, this is state law, correct?
It is, and we also have a prior board policy that is actually still in effect, for which this recommendation would come forward.
Would fall under?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that is because it would incorporate overnight travel?
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Now, if the overnight, and for clarification, there have been overnight travels by board members in the past, frankly, on numerous occasions, but most often, board members have not, have not asked for reimbursement by the district. They've just paid for that out of their own pocket, so that it's not required a vote of the board. State law has recently changed saying, in any case, it's, it's required for, for a vote. And frankly, it's, it furthers itself toward transparency that this board wishes to continue with our district. I'd like to thank Mr. Johnson also for representing our Board of Education at this conference, and let the public know that this continuing education through the Michigan Association of School Boards is something that this board is very deeply committed to. Very, I, I know of one board member, and she's sitting to my right, that came onto this board in this round, having board member experience, and that is Mrs. Laura, because she was, served as a board trustee in the 1990s, and then came back on to serve again with us. But, under normal circumstances, folks who are elected to the Board of Education do not have board member training, and it is a significant responsibility that we are charged with. And therefore, I commend this Board of Education going to great lengths to make sure that we are educated in the various roles that we have to cover for our school district. And I thank Mr. Johnson for taking it, taking advantage of this opportunity, this, this October. They are, these classes and opportunities, conferences avail themselves throughout the year. But, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Are there any other questions or comments? We have a motion from Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonfield, will you take the role?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is hearing from board members, and what we -- what this board has been doing for quite some time now, rather than hearing from each individual board member and hearing a lot of seven people repeating one another, we have asked one of our board members to represent the board with comments and thanks and so forth for the evening. By all means, if there are other board members who would like to add something afterward, they are more than welcome to do so. This evening, Mr. Mark Johnson will be taking that -- taking care of that for the board. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. As I indicated to Mrs. Oakwest a moment ago, we should have compared notes before, because she -- I checked off about half of the things that I was gonna have on my list, but, you know, as I indicated when we were doing the Teachers of the Year, the three people that we honored tonight are just the cream of the crop. We have so many teachers, administrators, custodians, just tremendous people in this district, and these people just rose to the top, and it's a credit to the hard work and dedication that they have put in. So I want to thank Lauren Schnell, the Teacher of the Year, for the elementary schools at Roosevelt Elementary, for Michael Race at Frost Middle School, and again, Michael, I'm sorry, I don't play an instrument. That came from the other side of my family, and for Julie Cosgrove at Franklin High School. We appreciate everything that you do for our students each and every day of the year. I'd also like to thank and congratulate our retiring teachers for the years that -- or the retiring employees and teachers, for the years that they've put in. Eighty-some years for four individuals is quite an accomplishment, and it just goes to show the dedication of the employees that we have in this district. And I can only say for the board how much we appreciate everything they do for us and our students every day of the year. That includes -- and congratulations to our new tenure teachers. Look forward to a lot of great things out of you as well, and congratulations to the new hires that came in as a result of our meeting tonight. I also wanted to point out that on November 21st, we're gonna have bowling for backpacks over at Mary Bowl Lanes. It's from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., and it's a great cause, it's a great fundraiser for the backpacks. So anybody who can go over there to Mary Bowl Lanes, please participate in that great function. Also, this Thursday at the Capitol up in Lansing is Legislative Advocacy Day, and there -- I'm told by PTA that there are still some spots available, they're free. I think it's the conference starts at 8:00 a.m., so it's pretty early, but anybody who would like to go, they need to get ahold of John Grisbeck at PTA, and you can call and talk to Ms. Woznack, and she'll have John's phone number for you. With that, I think that's all I have, President Burton, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other board members who would like to add anything this evening? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Burton. On behalf of the Livonia Warriors Robotics Team, I have two comments. Firstly, congratulations, because they won the Bot Bash, Bay Bot Bash, which was a competition that they --
Easy for you to say.
No, it isn't. Which they participated in, and they took the top slot, so fantastic, and kudos to them. They are also having a special screening of a movie called Slingshot, which is a documentary that highlights the most recent activity of Dean Kamen. Dean Kamen, he's an eccentric genius, he invented the Segway and several other things, and he is the founder of the first robotics movement. If you are an engineer, an inventor, or you just want to see what Dean Kamen has up his sleeve, please come to the screening, and we'll make sure that information is on the district's website.
Thank you. Are there questions -- are there comments by any other board members? Mrs. Bonnefield?
I've gotten a little bit of time to spend with some of our band kids over at Stevenson High School, and you guys, we have some -- I know we give kudos to the teachers and stuff, and these are the product of what come out of our district, and they're just really cool kids, and I'm just -- I'm so happy to be able to spend time with them, and we have such a great district, and I don't know.
There are, and one thing that's wonderful about Livonia Public Schools, and I've said it for years before I was on the board, and I'll say it for many more years, is that we have so many options for the needs of all of our students, whether they are a range of academic, whether they fit into the middle of the academic population, or need remedial help, or need extra challenges, or whatever kind of extracurricular needs they have or interests they have. There's such a wide variety, and that's very intentional, so that we have places for all of our kids to fit in, groups for all of our kids to belong in, to round out their lives and have everything not be all about just their schoolwork, but about some of the fun things that happen in our school day and after our school day. I will continue to say that that is an enormous credit to Livonia Public Schools, and a reason why I would encourage anybody to put their kids in Livonia Public Schools. Again, as has been mentioned by Mrs. Oakwest and others, the legislation that's passing right now is very important, and I encourage you to pay attention to it. Beyond paying attention, I encourage you, if you have a feeling about it, to contact your legislators. Some of the third grade reading initiative that includes, unfortunately, in my opinion, the retention, a mandatory retention of third grade readers under situations by which the legislature has determined, not the teachers in the classrooms have determined or the parents have input on, I feel that that piece is very detrimental to our third graders. If you share that opinion, I encourage you to get in contact with your legislators. It is being discussed right now, it will be voted upon shortly. And I firmly believe in local control and the placement of students to be between that teacher, the principal, and the parents of that given student, not in my place, certainly not in anyone in Lansing's place. Again, I encourage you to do so. And if you were here or at the earlier part of the meeting, or tuning in for the earlier part of the meeting when we had our Teachers of the Year, you heard how many times the word literacy was used, and it was used by all of our teachers, it's used by all of our teachers throughout. This -- the legislation that we were referring to is talking about testing students in third grade. I'd like it known that all of our students are tested within the first two weeks of kindergarten in Livonia Public Schools, and I venture to say through most if not all the districts in the state of Michigan, we have an emphasis on literacy through all topics, not just in reading and writing. Those things need to be recognized, our educators need to be thanked and applauded, not just those who are in the English Language Arts Department, but in all the departments, because they are all encouraged to incorporate reading and writing into their curriculum, whether it be art, music, mathematics, all the different curriculum across the board. So again, if you know an educator, if you are an educator, if you come in contact with your kids' educators, thank them for what they're doing, because I feel that education's getting a bit beaten up in the media right now yet again, and it's for things that we've been doing, they've been doing, I have not been in the classroom, they have been in the classroom, they've been doing for years and years, and doing it very, very well. They're to be thanked, not unthanked. But thank you for what you're doing, and if you do feel strongly about that issue, that retention of third graders be the decision of a school, of a principal, a teacher, and a parent, then I encourage you to contact your legislators and let them know that that piece needs to come out of the third grade reading initiative. Are there any other comments by any other board members?
Seeing none, we are at the end of our agenda for this evening. Have a nice evening. Thank you for attending and watching. Good night.